I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have one item of deletion in the item 11, discussion in nine with one community patients project per our board assistant and assistant county attorney. Are there any other deletions or changes? All right, moving on. On our consent agenda, we have A claims for $1,659,260.19, B minutes to approve regular meeting on 7/16/2019, special meeting 7/25/2019, and work session 7/29/2019, C approve employment status change for Derrilyn Kett, motor vehicle clerk, treasurer office, effective 7/25/2019, D approve removal from payroll for Courtney Fizlapp, dental assistant, health services, effective 8/1/2019, E approve increase for Matt Dutcher, mechanic, secondary roads, effective 7/30/2019, F approve hire of Robert Johnson, seasonal part-time secondary roads, effective 8/2/2019, G approve appointment of Scott Homer as weed commissioner, county weed commissioner, effective 8/6/2019, H approve application for temporary road closure of Jewel Street between Highway 92 and 150th Street from 9/20/2000, I'm sorry, 9/20 through the 22nd of 2019 for rally across National Championship. I approve application for use of Warren County Boardroom the fourth Monday of each month for the Warren County Democrats' Central Committee, J approve release of easement between Warren County and Anthony and Susan Poles, K approve license application for Class C native wine, WCN for Somerset Winery LLC, L approve license application for Class C liquor license, Commercial for Your Private Bartender LLC. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Tracy?
Sho.
Aye.
Duke.
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Item two, the agenda considered increase to vacation accrual rate for Tim Hill, Assistant County Engineer, Secondary Roads with possible action.
So, as you are where Tim Hill, our office got promoted to assistant, to myself, and with that promotion, we'd like to increase his vacation accrual rate from around three to four hours per pay period. This is something if we were to hire this position from the outside, we would start them at this rate, being it's a professional position with ability to grow and eventually become a professional engineer. So we think it's fair to do the same for someone that's already working here and has proven himself.
Any questions for David? Would accept a motion?
Would move to increase the application accrual rate for Tim Hill to the 4.62 per pay period.
Seven.
Any discussion?
Sho.
Aye.
Duke.
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, item number three, consider hire of Scott Wilson, Assistant Road Superintendent, Secondary Roads, effective 8/16/2019.
Would do a fairly competitive energy process for this position. After that process was complete, we decided to go with Scott Wilson. We think he'll be a benefit, very valuable in County. So our department recommends approval of his hire.
Now, isn't his vacation also a change in policy?
Uh, what's he starting at? 3.6 to 3.8?
Okay, then those are...
Yeah, he's a non-union salary employee too, so there's some leeway with that. It's, again, getting people in the door. A lot of these guys, when you're interviewing, have 300-plus hours of vacation saved up at their former employer. Thousands of hours of sick time, but that's kind of testament to how much of a hard worker they are, that they don't even earn their vacation. So it's nice when you hire these management salary positions that we start them at a fair rate. Thank you.
I would accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do.
Aye.
Sho.
Duke.
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Item number four, consider speed limit change to 40 miles per hour on 85th Flure Drive, Blue Bronze Street, Front Beardsley, Border Street to R67, Highway Southwest 9th Street with possible action.
R63. So, I guess to us, this is 85th, and we would like to put a 40 mile per hour on this road. It just needs one where one isn't there. To the north of there, there's a 40, and just to keep a reminder out there, the drive speed limit, we just need another sign. The east half of the road is Des Moines, so I'll be in contact with them for appropriate signage on their half. But as far as our half is concerned, we just need to fill a gap in where we need a 40 miles per hour zone. There's a lot of driveways and residences there.
It's currently 55?
It's questionable, maybe 55, it may not be. There's so many different city limits hitting these roads that, you know, by state code, if you see in a neighborhood setting and there's no posted limit, you're still supposed to drive 25. So it kind of becomes a convoluted mess, so to speak, when you have two different cities and a county touching all these roads. So it's kind of anyone's guess, depending on what city limits you're in.
Do you have any initial feedbacks from Des Moines?
I'm meeting with them at 11 o'clock, and I'll touch base with them then.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sho.
Aye.
Duke.
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, item five, consider speed limit change to 25 miles per hour on 80th Avenue, Southwest 28th Street, Front Beardsley Street to Acorn Street with possible action.
This is another road that touches Norwalk, Des Moines, and us. We have the east half, north and south. We cleared some trees in the area. We'd like to put a 25 mile per hour speed zone on that road to avoid confusion, and it is a dead-end neighborhood type road.
That's just north of Beardsley, correct?
Just, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, I would accept a motion?
I would move to change the speed limit on 80th, north of Beardsley, to the dead end at 25 miles per hour.
Seven.
Any discussion?
Sho.
Aye.
Duke.
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, item six, consider speed limit change to 35 miles per hour on Geneva Street from 70th Avenue to East, one mile with possible action.
We received a request for this speed zone. We were kind of on the fence about it, but it does run into Spring Hill, where they drop down to a 15 mile per hour. Speed's unset by that city. There are a few blind driveways out there where there's yellow warning signs, so this would help in that case. So we feel that 35 mile per hour would be appropriate to drive that one mile into Spring Hill.
Was that coming from the city council, or was that just...
Just one of the landowners out there.
And your office just thought that's appropriate?
It's appropriate. If it was much longer than a mile, then we'd probably stick with more warning-style signs, but a mile into Spring Hill isn't too unbearable of 35.
Would accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Tracy?
Sho.
Aye.
Duke.
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay. All right, item seven is consider five-ton weight limit in Greenfield Plaza and Hills of Coventry with possible action.
So this was discussed at a prior meeting in the previous fiscal year, and the board did direct us to spend this fiscal year's budget to put some five-ton weight limit signs up in the plaza. We just need another motion to put the effective date for today, August 6th, on those signs due to Iowa code.
I would accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Tracy?
Sho.
Aye.
Duke.
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Item eight, consider law enforcement center and courthouse change order number eight with DW Zweizer with possible action.
Good morning. Hopefully you have that entire change order in front of you. What that's regarding is, as we were finishing up the demolition of the courthouse, and they were regrading the foundation, the slopes, they got into some concrete. Because a lot of it was concealed with dirt, we did a little bit investigating, trying to figure out what it was, talked to Shai Batterie's engineer, and essentially, after excavating, trying to find it all, it appears that the addition that was put on the courthouse in the 80s, so I'm going to say the west end, must have been built over some unsuitable soils. And to mitigate that, they put in somewhere between four and six feet of additional concrete below the actual building foundation line. So we had to open all that up. We didn't get to confirm with the engineer, yeah, you gotta hear of it. It's going to be in the way. If anybody ever does anything, it's just going to be in the way. It's going to be a big hassle. So that's what we had change orders forward to remove that concealed concrete. And I tried to include as many photographs so you at least understand kind of what the gravitational issue was.
All right, I would consider a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? So this brings the total price to $163,149.70 for the completion of the deletion of the building? Nick?
Correct.
Okay.
Sho.
Aye.
Duke.
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Number nine, consider law enforcement center and courthouse completions certificate with DW Zweizer with possible action.
So this is just a regular business item each prime contractor that the county has an agreement with. Once they're complete, they have to be issued a certificate of substantial completion, which is reviewed by us, Shai Batterie, to verify that they are complete with their contract work, which then allows them to apply for retention. So this is just a formal document that deems them complete.
I would accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sho.
Aye.
Duke.
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, item 10, discussion of Justice Center project.
All right, I'm going to just update everyone of what has transpired since our last meeting a week ago. I think it was a week ago. We were asked to do several things, one of which was to review those options on how they affected DCI Group financially. I provided that information to Megan last week. I was asked to come up with a list of items that we discussed in generality last week of what can be done to the design to reduce the costs. I emailed that out on Friday. You caught me each of you on that. And in the meantime, there were some programming questions that Megan had sent to Shai Batterie. I think Shai Batterie responded to that last night or this morning. So we've done those things. I think we've thought back, anything that we were asked to do from that meeting, done. I guess at this point, I wasn't prepared to explain or discuss anything. In addition to that, I was just going to ask the three of you if you have any questions at the moment, based on all that information. I know there's a lot of information to get all of a sudden, but do you have any questions at this point? I didn't.
Can you go over the three options that we had before? I think we have a 1A, 1B, and...
The three options, I think Megan created a spreadsheet, which I think you guys have seen. Essentially, the three options at a high level are, option one is, is what we really discussed last week, which was with the current bids that are good, go with them, rebid the packages that were not good, capture some of this information that your bonding agency has come up with, and run with it. Now, the timeline to do that is tight. We would have to go out to bid next week and have everything opened and decided the week of Labor Day week or the first week of September. And that's because the 60-day period expires on September 7th, which to me is a non-business day, so we need to call the 6th and work back. But that's option one.
Okay, and will the price come down from the $37 million it's at currently?
Presumably, yes, it would, because you're rebidding packages, you're taking some of those scope items out that I sent out on Friday. So yes, it comes down. Now, can I guarantee the number? No, I can't stay in here and guarantee you the number, but yes, presumably it comes down. It also allows you to reevaluate all that, and does provide you the opportunity to just reject everything. So you're really at no risk, I guess, of being committed to anything at this point. You're not committed to those good bids. You still have the window to implement them or not. This is what I'm trying to say. Option two is really just rejecting everything and starting over. I don't know how to rephrase option two, but that's really what it is. And I don't know what that is. I can't define that. I can't define what your goal is at that point. Because a redesign means you're taking something that you currently have, that's been communicated to us, that this is what's needed, and you're revising that. I don't know what that revision is. I can't tell you what that really is. That would be input that would be needed from the county. Then option three is, the only way I can explain that one is, option three is you take what you currently have designed, maintain it, and then go out for another bond referendum.
Or you mean the additional money needed?
Well, I think the way I understand it is, you'd have to take the current bond referendum, and Megan will probably correct me. I think you have to take the current bond referendum and stop it, and then go out with a new bond referendum.
No.
I knew she was going to correct me.
From what Alarson Cunha has told me, it would be a referendum for additional funding. So if the original referendum stands, you do a referendum for additional funding.
Told you she'd correct it. But it's another bond referendum.
And...
And as I understand that, I think the next bond referendum you could do would be till November, correct? I think it's November.
Are you going to have by the 13th, the costs associated with each one of these choices, should we proceed with the one of these?
As best we can. Right now, we're working towards an aggregate total, not an individual line-by-line item. But yes, the rough total is easily to accommodate at this point. I know Mike's still working on some things. I think the last item on the list was an indication that there's still other things that we're trying to look at.
All right. Any further questions for Mr. Brudin? Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item 12, Census 2020 and Complete Count Committee presentation from Tracy Stevens. Okay, we'll go on to item 13, consider appointment to AG Resources Board with possible action. Should have received applications for Dee Rankin and Jean Laberty, Labertou. I would accept a motion to accept one of those women to the AG Resources Board of Directors.
I would move Steve Jean Labertou.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Sho.
Aye.
Duke.
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, consider appointments to the regional, this is item 14, to the Regional Housing Trust Fund with possible action. I didn't receive any applications on that, so...
This was in February 19th, the board approved creation of the Regional Housing Trust Fund, and with that, the board needs to appoint two members to that Regional Housing Trust Fund. This is between Boone, Jasper, Marion, and Warren Counties.
And Boone.
Yes, Boone, Boone, Jasper, Marion, and Warren. The two appointments currently up for consideration are Devon Markley, who's the Carla City Administrator, and Rachel Goodey, who's the Warren County Economic Development Executive Director, our... Devon, for suggestions for appointment to that Regional Housing Trust Fund.
Has anyone else expressed interest that you have to be on that board?
I have not heard anything.
Well, I would accept a motion to consider, now is it two appointments or just one?
Two appointments, both from you, both from mine, to the Regional Housing Trust Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Sho.
Aye.
Duke.
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Item 15, consider agreement with ICIT for Information Technology Assessment with Possible Action.
The paperwork I sent earlier, I guess earlier this week or right before the weekend, is just to solidify an agreement that we had tentatively reached with this group to come in and do a complete, it's an assessment, it's not an audit. What they're going to do is, they're going to check all of our IT systems for performance, security, even the way it's set up and things that we can do to improve. This is beneficial because it's done by other counties' IT directors that come in and assess. They give you suggestions, also on how to handle things, give you ideas on ways to save money, you know, better technology that might be available to us, which we're always working on. They gave us a few suggestions where we're able to get certain products through the state or through home net security in order to put it in no charge and kind of bump up the security level that we already have. So this is just to formalize everything, make sure the statement work is agreed upon, and that they're allowed to have access to the things that they need.
Is there a cost associated with this?
The cost is only for expenses on part of the fellows coming in. Part of the urgency in the short time period when I presented it was, they have a conference that a lot of them are going to be at the week of August 21st, which is when they want to do us from the 21st and 22nd. So it would offset some of the expenses we would put out. So the only cost is their gas, housing, and food for the handful of them. The estimate is, they told me they rarely ever do over 2,000. They figured it would be somewhere between 15 and 18 at the most, just by who they're bringing and how far they're coming. And we've already appropriated the money for it. We had discussed it back in March. So it's already in our budget for this year, or at least 1,500 of those there.
Do I have a motion to consider the agreement with ICIT for Information Technology Assessment?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Sho.
Aye.
Duke.
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Is Tracy Stevens here? Okay, moving on to item 16, Supervisor Grayport. Supervisor Duke?
Sure. Since our last meeting, we had a special meeting and work session. Started the follow-up process with some of the users of the courthouse jail to glean their thoughts on what's going to be the appropriate decision, which is quickly approaching. Attended regular meetings on the various boards, I said, including CICS and CIR. Let's all change it up a little bit. We also had a meeting in Norwalk at the Public Safety Meeting recently, last Friday, between Westcom, our 911 board, Norwalk Fire Chief, Sheriff Ross, and our legal team regarding some possibilities of collaboration between Westcom and the county for the Norwalk site. It's very early, very fluid at this point, but it seems like there might be several efficiencies since we're both soon to be on the ISIC system to look at something that makes sense long-term. We're both in the news and having that second fayer in Westcom, and that might really be going to reduce costs for the county. So we'll see where that goes, but I'm tentatively optimistic about it. Also met with Mr. Bates, who I see here today, took a tour of Greenfield Plaza to look at some of the areas that he really addresses to the board. Took some pictures and followed up with our engineer today, if he has time or this week, if his time is available right after this meeting. Other things that come up, hosting a hometown pride event tonight called Front Porch, Norwalk. I'm not sure if the other communities do something similar or not. It's an open invite, so for those that are so inclined, 6:00 to 8:30 this evening at my home, open all. And lastly, I just wanted to say thank you to the various Warren County communities for their efforts regarding RAG Pride and some of the other events that we've had, but specifically RAG Pride. I know that that takes countless volunteer hours and some real resources to make it go smoothly. I did ride anything this year when I did, or I was able to visit Norwalk and Indian Gold. I thought both of those events were very well put on. I've also heard great things about coming, Howell's tree farm, basically the whole route, so nicely done. My family was also able to make the county fair, which was recent. Had a great time there, and just wanted to give some kudos to the people on the fair board, as well as the Blue Classic. I think all those events went really well and were a good reflection of Warren County. So thank you all that were involved in that. I think all those events went really well and were a good reflection of Warren County, so thank you all that were involved in that. In special, congrats to the winner of the Bloom Classic. I think that's a local gentleman. I don't know him, but I think it's nice to be a local person winning one of these things, so nice job.
All right, Supervisor De Cook?
Yes, Supervisor, De Cook talked about RagBri and I, for six months, I spent numerous hours working on RagBri. And as Erin stated, it was, I think, a success. Now we're trying to figure out financially how big or how small a success that was and should have it probably in a week. It takes a while to get all the bills in. Also met with Warren County Economic Development, Hartland RC&amp;D, the National Bloom Classic, and finally, the county fair.
Thank you. My board report is attended the Hartford City Council in July, Conservation Board Member Concerns, met with some from that. Fifth Judicial Board of Directors meeting. A public hearing postponed to August 13th concerning the courthouse jail bids. Also a discussion of the shop for secondary roads. Impact Board of Directors meeting, bid review, which I've had with ECI users at Shai. Special Board of Supervisors meeting to discuss publicly the bids on the courthouse and jail and go over options. Bridge pre-construction meeting, met with assistant attorney and engineer. Went with engineer and assistant engineer to inspect bridges and roads. Spring Hill City Council meeting, spoke with citizens interested in serving on AG Resources Board of Directors and took citizens' complaints about roads and mowing and asked them to contact the engineer's office. And that is my report. Okay, item. Are you ready? Okay, so we are back on item 12, the Census 2020 and Complete Count Committee Presentation from Tracy Stevens.
No pressure, Megan. Everyone's watching, that's okay.
Hi, I'm not there for the call, but you're not watching.
No, right, yeah, right. Just while we're meeting, my name is Tracy Stevens. I am with the United States Census Bureau. And so we were reaching out to the local communities and your lovely supervisors here to just kind of let you know some of the things that are going to be changing with the census and some of the different items. And also ask for a partnership, which you have with your county and your city and your cities as well, to get this information out to the local public. So we want to just kind of go briefly over some of the things that are going to be changing, which is what she's pulling up right now. And I promise you, our computer's going to work a lot faster than all my keys, than my passwords. Thank you.
What is that fatal error message?
I think I'm not the kid.
The blue screen of the
So you guys went through this meeting a lot faster than we thought, so.
Welcome to Warren County.
So as I go through this, first of all, thank you for allowing me this time to speak to your community and to yourselves. And then if there are any questions or anything, you can either ask at the time or wait until after. If there's anything I can answer, I would be more than happy to do so. We got it. That's what you get. And I'm just going to do this. Continue to switch. So what they're calling this, the census is reaching out to local governments and communities, community partners in order to get a complete count for the census for 2020. We definitely want to make sure in Iowa that we get everybody that we can count here. They call it the Community Partnership and Engagement Program. That's just what it's for. It's to reach out to those communities to partner with your local government officials and to try to get everybody counted. Ms. Sanders is our regional director. We have eight regions in our, or eight states in our region, along with it's Arkansas, Illinois, Indiana, Iowa, Michigan, Minnesota, Missouri, and Wisconsin. So we are part of the Chicago region. This will be Ms. Sanders' fifth census, so she has been here, probably is going to be her last, I'm guessing. The next one is just for the city officials. There is an email and a phone number. If you feel like there's something you really need to contact her for, she would like you to know that she does have an open door policy. So as far as the census goes, we are not only reaching out to the cities and the counties, but also to the states. So that SEC, because we know that the government absolutely loves ACRIM, so you'll see several of those here. It's the State Complete Count Committee, so on the state, they've got Missouri's there. Iowa is getting theirs right now. So we are looking forward to having them on board to support the census as well. The reason that we have a census is because it is a constitutional mandate. It has been going on since 1790, Article 1, Section 2 of the United States Constitution. It states that everyone in the United States will be counted, needs to be counted every 10 years. And that's everybody that is living in the United States, including, of course, Puerto Rico, Washington, and Idaho areas. The other major reason that this is so important for our community as a state and county cities is because of legislative representation. We want to make sure that we get all of the, are we maintain and get the seats in the House that we need. The big one for communities, you're talking about $675 billion that is distributed in federal funding based solely on the census data. So with that, you can kind of see why it's so important we get everybody counted. The environment definitely has changed for the census. There's different factors and they've kind of located and banned these together. Some of those things, they found out in the 2010 census. One of the hardest-to-reach demographics are children that are five and under. A lot of this, not all, but a lot of this is because we have complex living situations. They're not the traditional ones. So a child might be half the time with mom, half the time with dad, or living in foster care, or living with a grandmother for a few months, or, and so these kids are not being counted. And there was over a million that were, they figured that were missed over the United States in the last census, which definitely affects funding. We also have a low population. We can't tie addresses to phones anymore, and people don't stay in one community, so they're moving constantly. They've got what we call couch servers as well, some of the younger generation. They'll live with somebody for a while, just crashing wherever, and then they go to a next home and a next home. So we want to make sure we get all of these demographics covered. They redesigned the census this year. We do have the benefit of having technology that has helped and aided us along the way. The Geography Division has been working on addresses since the 2010 census and changes. So they compile the data from every source you can think of and try to reach out. What our goal this year is, is to get 80% of the population minimally to self-respond. If we don't have to go knocking on doors, we're going to be more comfortable. But the other thing is, it's going to save time and money, and it's going to be a lot more efficient for our count. We're going to motivate those people to self-respond. We're going to count the population. Then after April 1st, 2020, we are going to be knocking on doors and asking the questions for the census for anybody that we do not have responses from, or any addresses we do not have responses from. We're going to tabulate those results, obviously, and get those. Those go to the President of the United States by April 1st, or, I mean, April, I'm sorry, December 31st, 2020, and they will be distributed to the states by April 1st, 2021. So we re-engineer the field operations. We are utilizing technology as much as possible. So you can see the staffing structure. There are 7,000 jobs in the state of Iowa for the census that the census is hiring and has been hiring for. That has been started. Most of those jobs are based out of the home. So if they're full-time jobs, we'll kind of go over that. Part-time jobs, you do it from home. They start at $15 an hour. And then you can kind of make your own hours for that. So it's a great way to earn some extra money. Cybersecurity, this is what everybody's kind of worried about and interested in, so we want to reassure you that federal partnerships have assisted us with threat detection and recovery. Everything is encrypted. Personally, if you are an employee of the federal, or of the Census Bureau, we have to take a lifetime oath. If we break that oath at any time, it's five years of jail time and $250,000 fine. So we take that very seriously and we don't want to share that with anyone. So we just want to make sure that you know that these things are tabulated. The census is a statistical branch. We don't care if you live in an apartment and there's six people and there's supposed to be two. Don't care. We just care about the bodies and the number of the people, so we're really not interested in anything else. We're going to wait for the screen to catch up. This is going to talk about the recruiting. So when we're talking about the jobs that are available, they're available right now. As we know, Iowa has got a very low unemployment rate. So what we want to do with that is, is really encourage the communities to engage their citizens, to be, you know, to jump on board and help with this count. Those, like I said, those jobs, you can go to 2020census.gov/jobs. There's also a phone number there. That's why we're reaching out to some of the counties and cities to make sure we can get as many people as possible. Obviously, when we are talking about address canvassing, enumerating, and, you know, going with that follow-through, it always helps to have people that are in your community working for your community. That being said, with the census, they do not employ anybody that is not in Iowa, that doesn't live in Iowa, to work these jobs. So you'll just know that if you see people on the streets or knocking on doors or whatever, that they are all from Iowa. This is just some of, some more of the different job positions they have. We will be getting several area census offices as well, so there's full-time and part-time positions. We are opening one or have just opened one in Des Moines, so that will keep progressing as we go. Recruit, as far as the applications, what you'll do for jobs is, and even if it's a part-time job, is you're going to go on census2020/job/jobs. You're going to fill out the application. This year, the applications, the questions on the application are going to be more like the one on the top right-hand is like, how quickly do you adapt to things? How good, you know, do you enjoy talking to people? Obviously, if you just can't can't stand talking to people, we don't want you knocking on doors and asking them questions. So we want to go past that, so. But it's super easy to do. A couple of background checks are part of that process, so the sooner the better. These jobs are just sitting waiting. There's, like I said, a bunch of them in Iowa. So the operational schedule, so you have kind of a timeline, is we have already began recruiting for the census job. That started in 2018. We've opened our area census office, and what we're going to start right now is infield canvassing, field address canvassing. So you might see people in your community. Please note, my badge is not, it's in my computer, but anybody that is working with the census will have federal ID on them. So it's easy to ask them by all means to do that. February is when the group orders operations begin. We'll start reaching out to tent cities, prisons, colleges, and universities. Anywhere where there's a group of people that are not related that are living together, nursing homes, nursing facilities, things like that. Self-response, the end of March 2020 is when people will be able to start sending in their information. After that, on April 1st, 2020, is census day, and we will begin the infield enumeration. So what people will have is a tablet. They'll go and knock on doors of addresses that have not responded. They will ask those questions, and they will tabulate that right then and there and send it off. Good motivation to self-respond if you don't want people coming to your door and knocking on it and asking you those questions. They'll be pretty relentless about that. Again, that's the non-response follow-up or NERF move. They're going to deliver that information to the president on December 31st and to the state for redistricting on April 1st, 2021. I said December. So with that, some key things to know about the census that's different this year is not only can you respond by mail, which we've always been able to do, we can, you can also respond on the internet, and you can also respond by phone this year. So you will be getting things in the mail. The census, mail-wise, will come in English and Spanish. However, we will have 59 different languages available, either by calling and requesting those information. The same as printed material. If you've got, you know, a language barrier in your communities, we will have access to that for all of the information as well. So the goal of this partnership program that we're, that we're asking is basically, we want to work with the local partners, your local governments, to be able to engage the community, to educate them on why it's important that the census, you know, this flood census data is important, and also to encourage people to please just self-respond. We will be going to several different others. We've got tribal government specialists, since it's a government within the own government. We've got, we've got state governments we're going to. We will have community partners that will be going to faith-based communities, to schools, to colleges, philanthropy organizations, and things like that. So on the state count commission, what we call there is a complete count commission, and this is basically just we're blocking the state, and by the executive order, the governor appoints a community counter, a commission, to kind of get this information out throughout the state to find out where those hard-to-reach demographics are and how we can best reach them. So kind of a brainstorming group that kind of helps out. And that will go through the state. Now, more, more for us is, we're also going out to the county and communities. So on the county and the municipal levels, that goes out by the highest elected officials. In the cities, that is the mayor. Your supervisors here would be part of that for the county. And that is just a complete count committee. They appoint a liaison to kind of run through that and to kind of organize that. And then you want to reach out to your community, find out how you can reach and how you can best reach those hard-to-count demographics. So the goal of doing this complete count committee is, obviously, we can send somebody from Chicago or somebody from Washington or something like that to tell communities, this is what you need to do. We found those trusted voices in the community here a lot. We've found those trusted voices in the community are a lot more effective. We're just looking to get this done timely, in an accurate and cost-effective manner, and that's where your community comes in. The reason that we do this, we want to target outreach efforts. We want to marshal resources to help and complete those count goals, and also to give you guys the training and the support you need in order to do so. So when we're talking about a complete count committee, what we're actually looking at is, and this is, they're on an individual basis, so it depends on the county, it depends on the city, it depends on the state. You know your demographics, and you know your community better than we do. Some of the people you might want to include on that committee are listed here, whether it's faith-based, if that is a big demographic, reaching out to schools, libraries, social services, and different things like that. So what they would get together and discuss is possibly, how would we reach our community and let them know about jobs, for example? Do we do this through social media, and how do we do that? Can we put this on our website? Who would be in charge of that? Do we need any kind of special demographic or linguistic help on that? How, and how can we get this out to those communities? So obviously, like I said, they'll be reaching out to different community and immigrant, immigrant-based organization. We're doing whatever we can. Some of the key partners that we have right now are the Polish-American Association, Chinese-American Service League, et cetera, on there. We do have nonprofit partners. They wanted to just give you a list of those. We do have several in the Iowa area as well. So your large calendar for those complete count committees, we've already started doing this in the Chicago region. We started in April, and we've been very successful. We started out with three partnership specialists for the government. I'm very happy to say that about six weeks ago, we ended up with another 10. So that's fantastic. Makes my job easier. These are your hard-to-count demographics. This is your key. When you're talking, there's people that are automatically going to be responding, but as you look at this in your community, supervisor, you probably already can look at that and go, yeah, we know just the people we need to address. These are the ones of census after census we have found that are very hard to get to respond. We want to do what we can to reach out to those, you know, specifically in our communities. New construction, that's more of the county, your GIS, things like that, will have already been in the process or completed this. So basically, right now, we're in the gearing up, we're putting these complete count committees formed. We're trying to let the public know that they're, why that's important, and also that there are those positions that are ready to go. You think it's a long way off until you realize, you know, how fast that time goes with the holidays. We also have a presidential election coming up, so we want to get that message out as soon as we can and as well as we can. Some of the census data tools that you can use, you can go on census.gov or 2020census.gov. One of those is what they call, you can go ahead and go on to the next one, is what's called an MPR, the male participation. This is strictly statistical. It's taken from census to census. If you'll look, that is just a list of our region, not everybody in the United States, but in the United States, we were third as far as getting a response rate from our citizens, which is fantastic. I believe in 2000, we were number one in the nation. So you guys have done a fantastic job shining, and we're really, you know, it benefits us all. If we break that down to your county, and you can go on and do this to the city level and everything else, in 2000, you guys had an 84% rate in Warren County, as far as replying to the census. In 2010, that went down to an 81, so we lost about 3% for the county. The other one is called, the other source, this one is based on the American Community Survey, so it's more projecting what they think and gathering data from that information. If you go on up, this is, you have got more than one census tract here. If you look at that low response score, that's 15.7%, that's what they are predicting that you will not have, that 15.7% of your population will not respond to the census. So those are the keys, and those are the demographics, and those are the hard accounts that we need to reach out for. This data is available for anyone at any time. But the other thing for your complete count committee, it's a great tool, because it's going to tell you what your populations are, and, you know, what do we need to think about? And you're looking at the numbers, if you look at households of children under 18, you know, you're, what, 27 or 17? 27? I can't see that from here. But if you look at those percentages, that'll kind of give you a key to where those hard-to-reach demographics are going to be. So this is just telling you how they get that information and why they do it. So once you have decided, yes, as, you know, Warren County, we want to have a complete count committee, we want to be able to bring these people together and get this message out, we don't want to put it on, all on your plate. So by getting that liaison and figuring out with them, some of the partners that should be on this community, this committee, you can kind of reach out, branch out, and see how you can best help. Once you get, you get that liaison, you can also let me know, and we'll get some training, so that's not on your plate either. We'll get that, and I can get them trained, and give them some of the tools that will help them to succeed. So basically, that is kind of the census presentation and some of the information that we have available. We want you to determine ways that you can partner, appoint a census liaison, help with recruiting for the census jobs, and also to formalize a letter to Ms. Sanders. That can be done through that email, that can be sent to me, or it can be, I do have an address for her that I will give you before the end, and just let her know that you are planning on forming a complete count committee through your liaison, and she keeps this and that does go to Congress. That's kind of the whole thing. If you go one more, it's just going to basically tell you, Ms. Sanders is a real big football fan, so, so there's that. We understand that a plan is only as good as those who are put in the game to mobilize the plan. And then the last one is just going to be emails, or places that you can go to find different information about the census and the census jobs. Questions, comments? You got me here now. I'll be here to help along the way as well, so I'll be here to liaison, so to speak.
Tracy, I just said the blocks already.
The census, the census tracts? Yes, yes. They do have those. And like I said, you'll have more than one census tract in your, in your counties. And as I've explained, to smaller cities, you know, it's going to look like they have 5,000 people when they've got 200 people. But again, we want to protect the identities of all the citizens, so it helps us to be more regulated, to be able to be more efficient, but it also helps to protect those identities. You guys are quite proud today. Don't know what to do with that.
You talk about protecting the identity. I've used past censuses for genealogy research. Is that not going to be available for that type of research in the future?
It, it will, but we can't release that. The way that that works is, it's after 72 years, then that information is released. So they're considering it a lifetime kind of thing. So when that goes to the president, it's just numbers. When it goes out to any agencies, it's just numbers. We cannot share that information with any other government entity or any other entity at all, other than just the numbers. But yes, to answer your question, after 70 years, that becomes available. And you're not the first one to ask that either.
But what about genealogy?
And the, we've been hearing the news and everything about undocumented. Is that question still going to be on the census?
That is resolved. As of July, that question will not be on the census.
Excellent.
We don't have control at all. Done through legislation, however, it will not be. It is very important that anybody that is undocumented get counted as well. That plays a key role in our federal funding, you know? And then just let them know too, that's part of what you want, those, you know, you want to reach out and let your community know, is that we don't, we don't care, we don't share that information. We just care about the numbers, and it may be, you know, it's really important with, you know, road, road maintenance, it's really important with some of the funding for children and SPAM programs and hospitals and different things like that. We good?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much for having me, and just feel free to contact me. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Moving on to item number 17, public input. This is your time.
George V., Greenfield Plaza. Want to thank Aaron for coming out and looking at three of the bad spots. I think you'll agree, it'd be cheaper to fix them before you do go back. Really bad, keep in. Also, it's a bit lost my attention. Lost my attention, I see it all the time, but we need some speed bumps put in. I think some of the drivers, looking at two on the speed sign, thinking it's an A, because they drive, D-Drive is a nightmare sometimes. They got parked on the side of the road. My last accident was on D-Drive, in the winter, on ice. I was coming up a hill, passed a parked car, and the guy coming straight at me head-on, and had to swear to miss him. He missed me, and I missed him, but I hit the parked car and damaged the car, because when you're on black ice, you don't drive. The black ice drives you. Found that out real fast. And I want to thank you again for coming out and taking a look at those spots, and well, checking the parkways, got water problems all the time in the backyard and basements and, Greenfield Plaza, Greenfield Parkway Hill is, well, it's a dead zone, several years ago, so it has to be redone, because there's water underneath that street too. There's water underneath Greenfield Plaza. Should name it something else. And thank you again.
Any others? Seeing and hearing them. Our next meeting date will be in August. Don't have that in front of me. 2015. All right, thank you. And that will be a 6:00 PM meeting on August 20th, on Tuesday. And I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move. Second.
Your question?
Show. You cook? McIntyre?
Aye.